Pledge allegiance, please.
Rise. Oh, sorry, Peter. Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Cheryl, the roll call, please.
Kim Connor.
Here.
Dennis Gagnon.
Here.
Peter Lewis.
Here.
Laura O'Connell.
Here.
Neil Toman.
Here.
Heidi Wendell.
Here.
And Neil Zuckerman.
Here.
Okay, well, we've got a quorum call. So, look, I think it's, I'd be remiss in not saying, so nice to see you all. It's nice to see you all as human beings in three-dimensional representations. It's a lot better than seeing on Zoom, and thanks for coming out. The second thing I'd like to say, and I think as Bob's our rep on the town board, thank you for this lovely, gorgeous facility. It is just breathtaking. I do have a touch of agoraphobia, and I jumped out of airplanes for part of my career. So, yeah, it's high up here. I feel a little high. I don't believe in us versus them. I believe in we. We'll try to close the distance a little bit, but for now, you know, we're up here. And I hope this goes a little faster than we've been over the last year and change in general. Zoom, you know, I'm always asking Glenn, you know, where his, turn off your mute button or, you know, figure out how to project, and I think everyone's done a damn good job getting through Zoom. Glenn, you've actually been amazing at showing us maps and things that almost felt like we were all together, but this will be better. This will be a lot better, and I hope everyone takes the, I'll make one brief safety announcement. If you haven't had the vaccine, please wear your masks. That's part of the, the only way we get through this thing. So, thank you for doing that for those who haven't had the chance or the ability to have it. Okay, let's start with the approval of the minutes. May, we'll do the May and then June, so can I have a motion to approve the May minutes from 2021?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Second, any discussion, edits, changes? None?
I have one correction, which is on page five. It says, and we were talking about Riverview Industries, and in the second sentence it says, but he, in fact, he thinks that Mr. Johansson, the applicant, is actually correct. And I think that he meant to say the applicant from the Shakespeare application, and because we had talked about something related to a similar question. So, just, I'd like to make note that Mr. Johansson is not the applicant for Riverview Industries. And that's it.
Did you catch it, Cheryl? The acoustics are, they're different with the high ceiling, so, and those of us like Steve and I, who both have mediocre hearing, mine from many years of loud helicopters, you know, just let's speak up and try to make clear. So, thank you for that, Kim. Others? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, okay. June minutes, can I have a motion for those, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Peter, second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Neil. Any comments, edits, changes? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, thank you. All right, that's done. Okay, correspondence, Cheryl? None? Okay, great. So, a quick discussion item for tonight. So, for many years, in fact, as long as I've been on the planning board, certainly I've lived in Phillips Town, I have never seen a sign on any street anywhere saying that there's an application in front of the planning board. And yet, it actually appears in our code that major projects and those with, I think, special permits are actually required to have that sign, which you see in many other communities around the region and country. So, that's been a problem. And so, we, you know, it was buried in a line in the code, but that's not the problem with it. That's what happens in Congress, too. They bury lots of things. So, Steve, could you please just give us the 4-1-1, if you will, on exactly what that requirement is?
Sure. In the course of processing the Desmond Fish site plan application, and after we'd actually closed the initial public hearing, it was brought to the board's attention that there's a provision under special permits, which says that if there's a public hearing on a special permit application, there's a requirement that the property owner or applicant post a sign, a notice sign, which they're supposed to get from the town clerk, stating that a public hearing will be held at a particular date, place, time, and it is supposed to be put up three days after the public hearing has been noticed, and it must remain up until the public hearing is closed. It was not done in the case of Desmond Fish application, so we had to re-notice the public hearing. The sign had to be posted. The clerk did not have any signs. We had to make them up because nobody had ever used the section before, and the sign was posted and it went forward. The reason that it had to be done on the Desmond Fish application, even though it didn't require a special permit, was because it was a major project. The zoning code divides projects to major projects and minor projects, and it was a major site plan application. So, even though it doesn't say anything under the site plan provisions about posting signs, it incorporates by reference the requirement that application be, a notice of application be posted in the event that it's a site plan. It incorporates the special permit requirement by reference. So, from now on, that's what the board's doing because that's what the code requires. And apparently, there are two applications on for public hearing tonight, which are major projects, and I believe that neither of them posted the signs within three days of noticing the public hearing, not casting any blame, you know, but that's what occurred. So, what's going to have to happen on both those is we can open the public hearing, can take it forward, allow people to speak and so forth, but it has to be held open, and the signage requirement will have to be met. They'll have to be posted within three days after the adjournment, the noticing, if you will, of the next public hearing. And from now on, all of the technical memos that the board gives out to applicants when it's a major project or requires a special permit will include a notification that they have to, they have to post the sign, and hopefully, we won't have this problem anymore.
All right, thank you. Cheryl, anything you want to add on that?
Just that the signs are available in the town clerk's office. She has them when needed, and there's no cost.
Which is actually funny because the code states that she'll post a notice, a sign purchased from town clerk, so that is nice of you. So, just for Glenn and other, other, those who deal with many of these projects, just I'll cite the paragraph. It's 175-62-F3, 175-62-F3. I believe Joe Regley was the one who was smart enough to dig through the code and find that, so God bless him for finding that. So, that's going forward, what we got to make sure we do, and thank you for bringing that up, and apologies to the applicants, but I think going forward, this won't happen again. Okay, old business. We'll go to the flag, Snyder vote. I'm accusing myself as a neighbor of that property. I turn it over to our second vice chair, Neil, Neil Toman, and I'll probably step down.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have the application, Christopher Flag, Heidi Snyder, 699 Old Albany Post Road in Garrison Minor Site Plan, barn style addition, connected to an existing four-bedroom residential dwelling. Mr. Spence or Mr. Flag, do you care to, do you care to come up and give us a little backstory? Or do you have anything you want to say before we get rolling?
Not, not other than what I've already stated.
Okay. That's fine. It's my, my, Mr. Flag, it was, I recall, we had two, we sort of had two things that were out there. One, well, what we have tonight is to, we prepared a resolution pending your Board of Health approval of your septic system, correct? Okay, all right, and, correct?
Yes, I understand it's pending.
We had that, and if I, going back over the minutes from the last meeting, there was an exchange between Mr. Gabba and Mr. Spence to try and nail down this provision about the breezeway, the connection being a breezeway or an enclosed structure. Did Mr., Mr., Steve, did Mr. Spence get back to you on that, or are we still?
No, Neil, what had occurred, as you point out, is I raised the issue of whether an open breezeway is acceptable to create a single structure as opposed to two structures, and I believe your consultant said he'd look into that and get back to us on the issue. I have not heard from him. I have, however, reviewed the code myself. I do not see anything which says that it wouldn't be considered a single structure. I would have felt better if he came back and said, here's something that indicates it is, but, you know, the code is construed in a manner most favorable to the property owner, so, you know, it would have been nice to hear back, but it's not an impediment to approving of your project.
So, Steve, you don't see any reason to hold up the, hold up the, hold up the resolution for, for what now?
No.
Okay, so we're back to, anybody else want to comment on this? Otherwise, I think we're ready to call for a vote on the resolution? No? Call for, call for a vote approving the resolution for Mr. Flag's application at 699 Old Albany Post Road pending the.
Yes, pending.
Pending the approval from the Board of Health.
Right.
So, can I get a, can I hear a?
So, I'll make a motion.
Make a motion? And a second?
The resolution.
I'll second. Second, Dennis, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Two, aye, aye vote aye. So, so, so resolved. Thank you, Mr. Flag.
Thank you, Neil.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, public hearing number one for Riverview Industries. Cheryl, do you want to read the public hearing notice?
Sure. The planning board of the town of Phillips Town, New York, will hold a public hearing on Thursday, July 15, 2021, starting at 7:30 p.m. to consider the following application. Riverview Industries, 3012 Route 9, Cold Spring, New York, 10516, tax map number 27 dot 20 dash 1 dash 28. Applicant is seeking major site plan approval for a parking area for commercial truck parking and storage. The applicant owns and operates a commercial truck repair and auto body business on two parcels located across Route 9, and this is an extension of that use. A wetland permit will be required for the disturbance in the 100-foot local wetland buffer. A flood plain development permit will be required for the disturbance in the 100-year flood plain. At said hearing, all person will have the right to be heard. Copies of the application, plot map and other related materials may be seen in the office of the planning board at the building department, 2 Cedar Street, Cold Spring. Prior contact, the Cheryl Rocket is required to arrange access to the documents. The meeting will be held at the town hall at 238 Main Street, Cold Spring, New York, dated at Phillips Town, New York, the 17th day of June 2021. Neil Zuckerman, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone here who wants to speak on behalf of the applicant, or on behalf of the applicant? Go ahead. Glenn, do you want to say anything?
Yes.
Thank you.
Please.
Glenn Watson from Beatty and Watson, representative of Riverview Industries in this application. It's been before you for some time. We finally got into a public hearing. We, a couple of things that you've asked I'd like to go over. Essentially, the use, everything was well-stated in the, in the, in the public hearing notice. Essentially, what we have is a sort of a little bit of a free-for-all kind of cars, car and truck storage, truck parts, storage area that's been used. We documented it back to 1956. It's gotten worse over the years. It's gotten less, less, more disorderly, and the town has called Riverview Industries to task. So, we've been working on trying to deal with this piece of property one way or the other, and, and so, we came up with a plan which involved remediation of the wetlands that have been disturbed. It involves containing, containing the, the use to a, what amounts to a corralled area, and, and we've developed a site plan that, that will screen the property and, and make it less visible. We, we met with the conservation board. As you know from their correspondence, they're ready to issue a permit. There are conditions on that permit. Oil separator, which obviously we hope, we expect will be a condition of your resolution. We've completed landscape, landscape plan. We've made application to New York State DOT. In that regard, this, the, the entry is basically where the entry is now, but we're going to control it with, with a paved surface and plantings and a berm that will, that will do double duty. It will first screen, screen the property, and then it will constrict the area in front of the property from use beyond just the entrance, and it will constrict the entrance to a very localized spot, so we don't have people coming in and out of the property on, you know, in different locations along the frontage, which is, which is problematic. We did submit to the state last month. You received that application. I do end copies of those plans. Also, last month, you asked us for a graphic, so, not very experienced in graphics, but we tried. So... What you have here today is what you, what you see yesterday morning. It was a photograph of the property, just, just, would you go, like, never mind, I'll do it later. The, the trucks are sort of randomly parked. You can see Route 9 in front of the property, and that's what we're trying to deal with. That's what we're trying to contain, corral, and make better. So, the first, I'm going to make sure I give you the right one next. So, the first graphic I want to show you is what it will look like on installation. What you have is, have it, again, Route 9 in front. There's a, there's a drainage ditch in front. There's a berm upon which trees, trees will be planted in a, in a pattern, and I will have to tell you, we shifted one of the trees. It's slightly different on the plan because when we saw it, we figured it, it would be more effective if we moved it slightly. These are, these are 10-foot, eight to 10-foot trees that you're looking at here, installed in the pattern shown on the plan. So, the one thing I know about this is when you see these plans, you're always wondering where, where it is, what does it look like, what do you show? So, I'm showing you what it will look like on installation. This is the same photograph with the, with the trees grown five years. So, you can see the trailer in the back, the trailer in the back starts to disappear as the trees mature and fill in. And so, we then grew the trees until 10 years out. The way we grew the trees besides the graphic, we looked them up and took their growth rate and applied their growth weight. So, after 10 years, the screen will look like this. You still get a glimpse of the trailer. The entrance is here, so we believe that the only way you're going to really see into that site is if you're, if you're someone walking by, not someone driving by at 45 miles an hour. That tells the whole story. We're hopeful you find this long journey satisfactory, and we'll close the hearing this evening and move this to.
We can't close the hearing.
I'm sorry.
But no.
I put up a sign, and I delivered a copy of the sign to.
Oh, did you?
A day late. Sorry, I thought.
No, I didn't know. It was a day late. All right.
Which is obviously a $4 per, and that's.
Right, like, like, okay.
So, uh.
All right, well.
Sorry, but let's let the public then. Anything else?
Yeah, I have nothing else yet.
Thank you. Any members of the public want to comment on this application? Okay, it's unfortunate. I'm sorry, Glenn, this is our new legalistic approach, so, I, yeah. Well, what we can do, though, is what we did ask last time was for traffic data. That was part of the conversation at the board here, and I think, Steve, tell me if I'm okay, or am I on safe ground? We can talk about the, the traffic report if anyone has any questions.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So, why don't we just, because otherwise, we're going to be doing that next time we're together in September, and so, rather, just do it now if people have question. Oh, sir, ma'am, come up to the mic, please. Yeah, Betsy, could you come up to the mic? Betsy, Betsy, can you please come up to the mic?
Well, I'm just curious about the growth of the trees, which looks really spectacular, but I just remembered that there were spectacular trees in front of that commercial spread of buildings. I believe it's Mr. Lestikatos's, and then they cut down half of them, or three-quarters of them. So, do we need to perhaps have a stipulation that these trees are never to be cut down or else they're not doing the job?
Thank you. Thank you. Others, anyone else?
Such a requirement is implicit in the site plan approval.
Other comments? All right, so why don't we just, we have, you, thank you for submitting the traffic reports, helpful, and the accident report, and I know that Ron, his note to the board addressed as such. Does anyone have any questions in the board about the accident report? I know that was a, okay, this is a refresher for our colleagues, my colleagues. When CRS came up, there's a lot of passion debate about the load of traffic, especially large trucks on Route 9, and we had a lot of discussion and debate, and thoughtfully, we did not have unanimous vote on that application, in part because of the traffic. So, this group asked for the applicant to also provide a similar analysis of accidents in that area, and that has been provided, Glenn, excuse me, not Glenn, and Ron commented on, on that, and that's in Ron's one-page note that you all received the day. And just to highlight it, Ron stated that 10 accidents reported over the last five years, six occurred during the work week, five of these happened between 8:00 and 6:00 p.m. None were the result of the applicant's operations on the movement of vehicles under repair across Route 9. So, I don't know if anyone on the board wants to comment about that report because it was asked for by this board.
So, it seemed like most of the accidents had to do with animals. I, I do think that, I don't know if we have resolved the issue of the trucks going across Route 9. You know, that seems to be the main concern, that when, you know, trucks are going from one location to the other location, that it would be good to have some kind of requirement, that there be a flagman or someone to, you know, assist with that. And I don't know what we're permitted to require, so that is my question.
Over to you, Steve. That sounds like a question for you.
Sounds like a Steve question.
Flagman?
She said, what are we permitted to require related to, because this application, there's a, there's a, we're mostly focused on the.
Right. This would fall under reasonable conditions. If you found that there was truly a need for flagmen or signals or something along those lines, you could require those if, I think, this is not a town roadway, is it?
It's a state.
State roadway. So, I mean, the state's going to tell you what you can do and what you can't do on it as far as, I mean, if you said you wanted signage or signals or something like that, you could have them ask. In terms of flagmen, certainly, that's something that they could, they could undertake, but I mean, before you imposed a condition like that, you would want a traffic engineer to tell you, you need flagmen for this. That's a pretty extreme type of a step for a site plan.
Steve, would there be anything in these, in the, in the state DOT codes acknowledging some sort of best practice for something like that?
I'm not familiar with the.
It'd be great if we could reference a statute and then just stick, then attach the statute to the resolution.
Right, I'm not familiar with the state DOT codes as far as roadway things like this, and I'm not even sure Ron would be. I think you're going to need a traffic engineer if that's what you're, you're looking to. I mean, the accidents that I've seen, I mean, most of them were with the animals, if I'm not mistaken. I don't think a flagman would have made any difference.
Right. I think it's just that when, you know, often when going down that road, the trucks from this place are parked on both sides of the road, you know, like, I assume that once you clean this up and everybody's parking properly, there'll be more room for the trucks to come into and out of the space without having them stacked up within the blind spot on the road.
When, what we've done with the, with the, with the outsides really make it impossible for them to, to drop, build, drive, park trucks in those in the front area where, and the other thing we've done is we've constricted the access to really one single place instead of having somebody drive up the shoulder and onto the road, or up down the shoulder and front, and that kind of stuff. So, and, and we, we made an effort to, a significant effort to make sure that we have optimized the site distance that would be available to that site.
But that's only, the only part that we're permitted to require is on this, on the west side of the road, right? So, on the east side, they could still double park if they wanted to, correct?
Well, that's.
Because we can't, we can't do anything about that.
That's another issue.
Yeah, okay.
In terms of crossing the road, I mean, I think it would be reasonable to say that, you know, just as a matter of common experience, the road's busy earlier in the morning, people going to work, and then it's busy later in the evening, people coming home from work. So, maybe you want to limit truck traps across the road from 7:30 to 9:00, and then from, you know, 5:00 to 6:30, something like that. As a condition that could be imposed. I mean, you wouldn't want to be that arbitrary with the times. You'd want to look into, you know, have somebody, maybe Ron could give you some better ideas to what would be appropriate, but it's certainly the type of condition you could look into if, if this is truly a concern for the board.
Other board members? Yes, please, aye.
What's considered the vicinity of the site? I wasn't sure whether, in the CRS case, I think we got the, what was considered the vicinity of the site was defined in the, in the accident report we received, but I wasn't sure in this case, what's the vicinity. And I'll just tell you, my question just comes from the fact that, I mean, as you know, because we discussed, we've discussed this on, at a number of meetings, including with respect to CRS, I mean, we all drive the road. We see what it's like. This accident report makes it look like nothing ever happens on, on 9. And it's just, doesn't, it seems a little counterfactual, so I, I just, you know, I don't know what the vicinity is, if the vicinity is right there at the site.
It's not right there, and so, I think that at least one of them talks about an accident at, at Jaco's Road, which is, I don't, I guess it's 1,500 feet or 2,000 feet north. And, and I can tell you what, what we asked for, what we were given, but I don't know that number right now.
All right, other questions, comments? Peter, please.
I might have missed it at some, at some point or in the report from the conservation board, but what, what exactly is being done between the wetlands that run from the south to the west, even to the north? Is there a land buffer there, or are you putting up some type of actual concrete buffer? I don't know which one it is. I guess it's this.
Actually, what, what has been, what was determined was that the, the wetlands from, on the north side was taken out of the mix. There is wetlands to the west and to the south, and what I originally talked with the conservation board was a chain link fence with a gate in it, a man gate, not a vehicle gate. And the, Mr. Reichert, who's the principal of Riverview Industries, suggested the use of these preformed concrete blocks, so we basically have a wall that's going to ring the, ring the yard so that it'll be a two- or three-foot-high wall, and so, it will prevent access to the back. There'll be a gate, but it'll be a man gate.
Right, so there won't be any encroachment as it goes along?
Right, right. And then, he's agreed, a condition of the wetland permit will be a program behind the wall that's opposite Route 9 to restore and, restore the wetlands that had the most significant damage, and that's, 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 will be a condition of the conservation board's permit.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Board members? No? Last thing I'd, oh, no? Last thing I'd say is, I also had asked that the EAF Part II be resent to the board, so it's in your packet, because we have not made our secret determination yet, and we did not have a conversation about that. I'll, I'll open up if anyone has any questions on the Part II. Please. Please.
Are they going to finish it?
Go ahead.
It's not complete. If I understand correctly, if you mark off yes to impact, I mean, I know it's just an administrative thing, but all the other provisions below that need to then be answered, whether, if it's a no or a moderate or whatever. It's not complete in that sense. Like, on, for item number one, impact on land.
I may be mistaken about that, and we'll certainly fix it, but if, I'm in a longstanding habit anyway, of if I check yes, to check those, only those that, that have the impact that I have to be worried about. But if you want to correct it, I'll be happy to do that.
Okay. Yeah, I think you should just review it, just one more time. I mean, I was just reading through it, and there just seems to be one or two items that I think need to be checked.
Well, it's, Part II is, Part II is your document.
It's our doc. And that's why she's, I think she's basically saying to you, please put a check mark there in a very...
Well, you said, I understood you just said, check. You want a check or yes or no, moderate for every single box? That's what I understood you to say. And I'll be happy to do that with my suggestion. And I thoroughly expect that there'll be one or two that you might find less of an impact, and check a no instead.
No, I guess what I'm saying is, is that I'm understanding that the process is, is that if you're hitting, for example, item number one, where it says impact on land, and you hit yes, then we're required to then answer items A through H.
And that's what I understood you to say.
So on this, you've answered A through C, you didn't answer D, you answered E, and then you didn't answer F, G, or H.
I, I understood what you said, and, and I said that my habit has been, and maybe it's a wrong habit, that I only check those that apply. And I'd be happy to check the others and resubmit.
Okay.
Steve, any opinion on box checking?
Well, there's some boxes you do check on, on the, the EAF is not a well-drafted form, it's just not. So, I mean, there's some that you do check, and some that you don't check. I think probably she's right, and they should be checked in this instance, though.
Be happy to do that.
Regardless, we, we need to discuss it, because we need to make a determination for secret when we, when we return, because I'd like to do close the public hearing when we get back together in September, as soon as the conversation, so board members will be ready for a discussion about secret determination at that point. That's a very good point. Please, go ahead.
Well, I'm just, I, I've said this the last, at the last meeting.
Go ahead.
And I'm not sure, my understanding is it may not be something that we can consider, but I, I would check yes to impact on aesthetic resources, because the site is a terrible eyesore. And, you know, I, I understand that may not be something we can consider, but to me, just as a matter of what I feel like is my duty to the public to say that this is an acceptable project, it's a terrible eyesore. So I would check that, yes, it will have an effect on aesthetic resources, because it's...
With all due respect, I think you have that backwards. The effect, the effect of your approval is going to improve that eyesore, and so the impact would be positive.
But it doesn't look anything like those pictures. It's...
It doesn't. The condition today is not what's, 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 what's being discussed. What's being discussed is the impact of your approval of the future condition.
Well, I guess from my perspective, there should be some cleanup first, so we could be approving something that looks like, yes, we can tell everybody, we approved that site. I understand, I know that I, I may not be correct about the order of process.
I think we had this discussion either last time or the time before. Your point is well-taken. It is definitely not the most beautiful area in town, but it is definitely meant to be an improvement. I don't know if other people have views on Heidi's point?
The way I see it, I think I agree with Glenn, is the whole point of, the reason that this is in front of us is because there was no site plan, and things were just happening willy-nilly. So the town said, hey, you got to have a site plan. And so we have gone through this process of creating a site plan, and they will have to now, once we approve this, clean it up. But you can't really clean it up in advance, because you have to know what you're approved to clean, what the, what the plan is for the cleaning. So that's, that's how I understand it.
Other points? Okay. All right. So let's, let's take it from there. Thank you, Glenn. We'll keep the public hearing open. We'll return to it when this, when, when we return in September. Okay. So Cheryl, we're have our second public hearing for 3622, Route 9, please.
Planning Board of the Town of Phillips Town, New York, will hold a public hearing on Thursday, July 15, 2021, starting at 7:30, to consider the following application. 3622 Route 9 LLC, Cold Spring, New York, 10516, tax map number 17 dot dash 1 dash 44. Applicant seeks site plan approval to remove an existing approximately 2,000-square-foot structure and 325-square-foot accessory structure, and to construct two new buildings, 15,400 square feet and 10,500 square feet, to house contractor offices and storage. At said hearing, all persons will have the right to be heard. Copies of the application, flat map, and other related materials may be seen in the office of the planning board, at the building department, 2 Cedar Street, Cold Spring. Prior contact with Cheryl Rocket is required to arrange access to the documents. The meeting will be held at the Town Hall 238 Main Street, Cold Spring, New York, dated at Phillips Town, New York, the 17th day of June 2021. Neil Zuckerman, Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Cheryl. All right. Sir? Hi. Good to see you.
Hello. Good to see you all in person. I'm Adam Thieberg from Inside Engineering Surveying Landscape Architecture PC, here representing the applicant, 3622 Route 9 LLC. I'm also joined by Stark Kip from Creighton Manning Engineering, who can address any questions you might have with regard to traffic. Just for a quick overview, for the purpose of the public hearing, this is 3622 Route 9. It's on the east side of Route 9, in the Highway Commercial District. The site in its current condition is, has two buildings on it, a primary structure and accessory structure, three points of access along Route 9, and storage in the back. And it's currently used as contractor offices and storage. The applicant is seeking to maintain that use as contractor offices and storage, but is looking to improve the site by, with the removal of the existing buildings and the construction of two new buildings, one 11,620 square feet, the other 10,500 square feet. Also associated with the project, there are two new driveways, eliminating one of the access points along Route 9, new parking, new utilities, we're going to have, you know, new water service, a septic system, and the required stormwater practices. In addition to that, we will be formalizing the storage areas with fencing and screening. And then in addition to that, we're doing some extensive landscaping to both screen the operations of the facility and to just beautify the, the property. So that's kind of a quick summary overview of the project itself. With regard to updates from the June meeting, there's a few items to discuss. One is that we have further augmented the landscaping. There was some discussion last month about the rendering and the representation of the plantings. And I kind of respectfully pushed back on a comment in Ron's, Mr. Gainer's memo, that the plantings are shown at full maturity. These are, these are not shown at full maturity, they're much closer to the height and size at installation. Typically, we look to show them a year, two, three, you know, not, not the day after they were put in the ground, but with a year or two of growth, and that's about what, what we're showing here. So along that same vein, there was also discussion of whether there was opportunity to add more trees along the frontage. I, I did want to point out that, you know, we can't plant every square foot, because we have, you know, as, as I, you know, as I said, these are not at full maturity, we need to provide room for these trees to, to grow into themselves. That said, we did find room to add additional evergreen trees along the frontage. Additional updates from last month would be that we've responded to a lot of the detailed comments from, from Ron Gainer's memos. We're going to continue to go back and forth with him and tighten up the, the technical items with regard to stormwater and utilities. And finally, the septic that is proposed as part of this project has been approved by the Putnam County Department of Health. So with that, that's kind of, that's kind of where we're at. We, I should also say, we are still in the process with the, the state DOT on the driveway permits that'll be required as part of this. In fact, just the other day, we got a comment memo back, and I'll say it was not extensive. So we're, we're well on our way in that process. And obviously, the approval of those permits through the DOT will be certainly a condition of any approvals that were granted by this board. With that, I, we would take any questions from the board or the public?
We're asking for the mic back out, we're taking any comments from the, the public, and then, then we'll go, we'll go to the board. Any members of the public here to speak? Okay. Well, again, unfortunately, oh, Carl, do you want to say something? Why don't you come up, please?
What's it going to look like? Because I am on...
Carl, I'm sorry. Can you just keep, come to the mic, please? Sorry.
The backside of the property, what's it going to look like? Because I, I own behind it, and I would like to know what it's going to look like.
So we, we've provided architectural elevations and material choices with, with regard to how the buildings are going to look, but I think first and foremost, the thing to note is that we have made some adjustments over the course of our, our time here before the board. And among them is having, taking this rear building, shifted it, and moved everything forward. And so we're maintaining a significant portion of the, this, this is you up here. So we're maintaining a significant portion of the existing vegetation between your lot and the development that happened on this side, and we're augmenting that on the, on the outside of that naturally existing tree line.
Can you just turn over the bottom?
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me just set that down, that'll make everything easier. We've augmented that naturally existing tree, buffer with a heavy planting of evergreen trees. So, so your view would be minimal. What you would see would be, you know, if, if you saw anything through that heavy dense tree line, let me go to the rear building. Well, this is, this is the rear of the front building. You can see some of the material swatches. Obviously, the architect, Keith Schofield of LMB Architects, couldn't be here with us tonight, but they're going for a very neutral palette, grays, blacks, cream colors, colors that'll allow this building to just blend into the landscape, the surrounding landscape. So that would be the rear of the, the front building, and then the rear, let's see, of the back building, which has been shifted away from your property. Would be a similar facade with neutral, neutral colors, and, you know, really, really quite a, quite a simple design with, with a neutral color scheme that'll blend into the landscape.
Carl, you have any follow-up questions you want to ask?
No.
Okay. Okay. Other members of the public? Anyone else? Okay. I know Ron had a number of comments, and I heard you addressed a few of them. I assume you received his technical memo?
I did. I was a little puzzled, because it looked like it was the same comments from last month, but we did address them in our, in our memo. We're happy to work with Ron on...
Yeah. Well, obviously, he's an abstentant, so I'm not going to, you know, we're not going to speak all of the absent, especially someone on vacation. But he does, the one that you did not mention was the board specifically was interested in having the applicant specify the size and types of vehicles and trailers that could be expected to leave the project in the AM and return in the PM. So is that something you have in progress?
That is something, yeah. And Stark is here, again, from, from Creighton Manning Engineering, and they, they produced the traffic report, and they, he can speak in detail to the, the types and volume of traffic that'll be coming through there, and the types of vehicles that would be typical to this type of use. So I'll have to start.
Evening, everybody. Stark Kip, licensed engineer with Creighton Manning Engineering. So we are aware that it will be contractor's offices. We looked at it under a use known as a specialty contractor. These are typically plumbers, landscapers, roofers, and these kinds of uses are going to be using cargo, cargo trailers, like the kinds behind a pickup truck or a box truck, a, a box truck itself, which will be, you know, a 20-to-30-foot pinskey, or a triaxle dump truck, which will probably be the largest vehicle that the site will see. A triaxle dump truck is your, you know, your, your typical construction dump truck that you'll see on the roadway. None of these uses that are anticipated to use the site are going to be having a WB40, which would be a, a small combination truck, or a WB67, which is the, the large combination truck that you see on the roadway. Also, I mean, to speak to the site design, the, the front parking lot is not designed to accommodate a large truck, like a large combination truck. And any vehicles, any large vehicles brought to the site would be taken to the rear of the building for, for unloading, loading, and storage. So I know a concern was, was having vehicles screened from the, from Route 9. That would be adequately done with the fencing and the landscaping that Adam's discussed.
Do we have those traffic numbers of those sizes expected to be on the property?
There's no, no specific number to the, or, sorry, no specific detail to the types of vehicles. There is a number that we can estimate using a publication that we have, and under the same use that we use for estimating the trips generated by the site, it's estimated it'll be about 13 trucks, truck trips per day. That's the entire day. So, you know, if it's an eight-hour workday, that's about, you know, one to two trucks an hour. In addition to that, the report that we provided, I believe it showed 36 to 44 trips, 36 trips in the morning and 44 trips in the evening. These 13 trips from trucks would not be in addition to that number. They would be included in that 36. So in the morning, say there's two truck trips, there would be 34, you know, regular vehicle trips in the morning hour.
Good. Okay. Other questions on the traffic situation that Ron, again, I'm just reading Ron's technical memo, and this is one of the topics you hadn't mentioned. Other questions from the board?
So are there any, Ron had asked, how many vehicles would be stored overnight on the premises? Do you know that?
I do not know that answer. Do you have an idea? Yeah, we'd have to have the applicant weigh in on exactly what those numbers would be, but I, I think we've, we've stated in statement of use in a couple of the places that we're looking at a maximum of eight potential tenants. So if you extrapolate that against a, a number of trucks, which we could give you a number, if that's what you'd like, you know, and I don't know if you're looking for that to come in the form of just a response in a letter, or if you're looking for that to be something that's memorialized on the site plan somehow, or I guess it kind of speaks to the question of what can be enforced, or how, how that would be codified on, on the site plan, or how you're looking for that to be presented.
Yeah. So that would be a question for Ron, I guess, who is not here, like, where, because this is his comment, like, where it's appropriate to, if it's in...
If it's accepted by the board, I'm happy to reach out to Ron directly and discuss it, and we can get you what you need for the next meeting.
The other question that I had was, you made a comment that not all of the storm, not all of the water that was coming off the impervious pavement, I can't see where it's marked here, the impervious area could be captured. And it says, this is page two of your memo dated July 1st, it says, as, number four, the last sentence, "As there is reduction in untreated impervious area from the site, we feel this is not a concern." But it says it's, it says it's less than a third will not receive treatment of the area on this site will receive treatment. I, I don't know how to evaluate if that's a large number or a small number, but it seems like a third is kind of a lot.
Yeah. So that comes down to calculations that, that come out of what portion of it is redeveloped, and what types of impervious surfaces we have. The, the requirement that is set forth as far as the stormwater that you're, that is captured and treated, is you, you need to basically show that you can attenuate up to a 100-year storm, meaning that you're allowing less water... to a hundred-year storm, meaning that you're allowing less water to leave the site in the proposed condition, you know, up, up to the hundred-year storm than what currently exists on the site. Um, and that, and that is achieved by the, the drainage, uh, the, the stormwater system that has been designed. Um, so, so that is, that's really the criteria by which, uh, the stormwater system's been designed.
Yeah, so in Ron's memo, it seems like, um, he'd like, he has a suggestion on a way to redirect the outlets. So, if there's some way you could look at that and respond to us about that.
Yeah, I, I think that was addressed. Um, so again, I, I said that it looked like it was the same comments from last month. I, I believe we did address a lot of that. I know for one, one item, I, I know we certainly addressed it. He was, he had mentioned about a curb line that had been in place in a previous version where if that curb line were taken out, um, the stormwater on the driveway could just sheet flow directly into a basin, which has been done. And so, I, so a lot of these, or I, my understanding is that all of these things have been addressed, um, which again, is why I, I mentioned that I was puzzled that we had the same comments.
Anyone else on the board? Any other questions? Any, go ahead, please, there.
Um, so can I just ask, and this may just be me, because I missed it, um, because I'm looking at the track, the vehicle maneuvering plan. I didn't realize that the truck entrance and exit was only on one side. So, is the double entrance for general cars that come in and out and then park, so like, I guess, like employees' cars, and then trucks are only going to use the southern entrance?
Exactly. Yeah, that's how it's contemplated, that the, the southern entrance would be for the, the garbage truck that's coming in to take away the, you know, the dumpster, the, the vehicles that are being brought in by a contractor, all of that would, that traffic would naturally want to come through the, uh, the southern entrance. It's been designed that way. And yes, the northern entrance is envisioned to be just for passenger cars. It's, it's the contractors themselves, their employees, their, you know, and, and maybe their clients stopping, uh, by the office. And, uh, as Stark, I think, mentioned, uh, the parking along, and I think was mentioned at a, a couple of meetings ago, um, the parking along the front of that front building, um, would be for passenger vehicles. You're not gonna have, you know, you're not gonna have a dump truck parked there. That, that, that traffic would all be directed to the back. And, and to your point, yes, that would all go through that southern entrance.
But it looks as if the throat of that entrance doesn't accept two vehicles in it, if a 50-footer were to be turning in or turning out.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't understand.
Well, I guess the mouth of it, if a 50-footer were coming into that, that southern entrance, then another car cannot come out that same entrance because it's only wide enough to make that turn.
Right. So, so in, in the event that a large vehicle, like the ones that are, that are modeled in that plan, in that event, yeah, they, the space would have to be cleared and that's typically how those things are designed. The layout of that, uh, that driveway apron is per DOT specifications for this, this type of use. And again, that, that, that's in process and we're responding to comments from the DOT with regard to the, the design of, of, of the geometry of, of that, uh, that driveway. Um, and again, that's typically how those are designed.
Yeah. Okay, I get it. I'm just a little, I'm just a little nervous because I look at the, the distance between where the edge of Route 9 is to the back of the first building. And if another truck were coming in, visually, can that truck see, if I'm coming in, will I see another truck coming out at the same time? Because it would, I'm just saying that it's a little tight.
Yeah, we, we have a long straight run there, so, so we are confident about the visibility at that, uh, you know, at that driveway, uh, coming in, going out. And, and yes, in, in the, the rare events during the day when, when a larger vehicle were coming through, there would be some negotiation of that, of that, that maneuver. Um, if there were another vehicle, you know, they might use the other exit. But that's, that's how it's been designed. And again, the, the driveway and the apron onto Route 9 is designed per the guidelines of the DOT.
Anyone else? No? All right, well, we're gonna unfortunately have to keep the public hearing open. You've got that. Um, so we'll see you when we get back and you'll obviously coordinate with Ron, uh, hopefully in the intervening time. You've got his comments here. I don't know what's old or new, but that's what he gave us. So, sorry, he's not here tonight and thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Good night. All right, uh, we're gonna have the Garrison Golf Club slash Shakespeare now. Um, everyone get out their weightlifting kits. Amusingly enough, this is the lighter of the two packets for the night.
Physical fitness is all important.
It, it is. It's, it's right. As is, as is, uh, as is physical therapy for some people.
Yeah, well, sir.
Okay, so the plan tonight for Shakespeare's, as we've talked about, is we're not gonna have a content conversation, or at least I don't expect it to, unless board members have specific questions. The purpose of this evening is to be oriented to the materials that are here. Um, as I believe, uh, the applicant knows, we've asked AKRF, who are also on vacation tonight, God bless them, um, uh, to provide us a memo that just sort of helps us understand what is here, what is partially here and what is not yet here. And when I say here, I mean, and I'm saying this for the public's benefit, not yours, that we have done our part two, we had a part three outline. You have now started to submit materials along the lines of that outline, of which this very large binder is part of that submission. So, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to give us a sense of what is here and what is still to come. And then during our hiatus, we will be a lot, doing a lot of reading. So, Dan, over to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. P. Daniel Hollis, the Hollis Laylaw and Simon, the project architect, with Jan Johansson, our planner from Keller Sessions, John Canning, our traffic engineer, Laney McKinnon is, uh, remote, uh, by texting us from Nashville, where she's on another project tonight. Uh, and Ali Petron is also on a, a site, a different, in a different jurisdiction. So, we're gonna do the best, Jan will, to walk you through that and, and give you the, sort of the highlights of it. Uh, we will also, uh, comment a little bit on the AKRF memo. We only received it today. It deals mostly with completion, uh, and interpretation of completeness. And we'll, and we'll deal with that. What I wanna be able to do, so we don't forget at the end of the meeting, is to just, uh, have the chairman permit us to have continued interaction with AKRF so that we can work any of the kinks out in the completeness. So, when we're back here in September, we'll have a very full and vigorous presentation on all aspects of the, uh, project pointing towards, uh, a secret determination by your board. Fair enough? With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Johansson, who was, uh, a moment ago behind me. I'll, I'll move over. I'll, I'll go behind you.
Good evening. Uh, nice to see you all in person. Jan Johansson, uh, principal at Keller Sessions Consulting. Um, together with the design team, uh, we put together the, the EAF part three, uh, that was submitted to the board a couple of weeks ago. Um, with that submission was a, a full set of plans, uh, prepared by Badie and Watson. Um, the exhibits that were, uh, included, um, in the, in the EAF, which I think there was 50 or so, uh, they were prepared by, um, a combination of Badie and Watson and Nelson Burwaltz, the, uh, landscape architect. Um, and, uh, my office is the primary author of the, the narrative sections of the document. Um, we fully acknowledge, uh, that the EAF is incomplete. Uh, we knew that submitting it to you. Um, we are waiting on some technical reports, uh, from some sub consultants, uh, that you're aware of. Um, the phase one and two, uh, environmental site assessment, which was scoped, um, is, is yet to come. Uh, the noise analysis is, is being conducted now. We expect that, uh, to be complete in the next month or so. The water budget analysis is being performed by Geo Design, uh, which was brought into the project team. They are also conducting the phase one and two ESA. Um, and the dam analysis, we brought in tectonic engineering to evaluate the existing dam. Uh, they are currently, uh, working on that and we expect to have their report, um, in the next month. So, I, what I thought, without getting into any technical detail, uh, I'll just walk you through, um, the, the binder that was submitted and, and what's in it. And, um, we could, we could take it from there. Um, so there's a, a pretty thorough project description, uh, describing the property, um, describing the existing zoning, the land use approval history, uh, from 2005, uh, describing Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival and who they are and, and their mission and what they wanna do here. Um, describing the proposed action in detail with references to numerous exhibits and, and site plans, description of our phasing plan and how we expect this site to be developed over the next, uh, 15, 20 years. Um, and also the, the SECRE action, uh, being a Type 1 action under SECRE and the list of, uh, required permits and approvals that we anticipate. The EF, EAF outline scoped, uh, 15 categories, environmental categories that you asked us to look at. And what we submitted to you includes all of those, although some, uh, sections are incomplete at this time. Uh, and we provided numerous tables and exhibits to try to help, uh, present that data to you. Uh, so in the land use and zoning section, again, we described the existing zoning, the 2005 Garrison-
Just gonna pause you for a second.
Yeah.
Because I think it's important, before we even dive into that, just clarify the sections.
Sure.
Because I, you took a slightly different structure than what is the part three. And I think it takes a little bit of a gymnastics sleep to, to track along.
Okay.
So, meaning-
So, I read in the, in the-
Meaning you have, you have in the booklet, and this is for those of us sitting here, there, there are three sections, Roman numerals two, three and four. Yes? Roman numeral two is what is called chapter one in the EAF part three, right? And then section Roman numeral three begins with land use, which is our chapter two. And then it continues on through, I think, chapter seven. And then you go to section four, which should be just chapter eight. So, what I'm getting at is, you can tell it's, I'm saying it intentionally because it's unclear. It would be great if we just used the exact same nomenclature of part three outline, so everyone knows, chapter one is called project summary and chapter two is called, so it's all exactly the same because-
That's fine.
It's too much leaping around to go to section four, Roman numeral four, the same as chapter eight.
The scope outline wasn't, it wasn't my intention. When I prepared it, for it to be the table of contents, um, and it does follow the exact order of the part three outline. But there's a lot more information that we know now that, that we didn't know then that I wanted to provide to you. So, some of the numbers changed a little bit. I'm happy to go back and do that, but, um, it, it's all there and it's in the same order. It's just numbered differently because we have some front-end material that wasn't part of the scope, so.
Oh, you're great. All right.
So, we're, I'm happy to-
Did anyone else have that same observation? Yes, Dennis? Yes. So, I, I usually tell the people who work for me, tell them where you're gonna tell them and then tell them it. And I don't, don't change it in between because you get us confused.
Okay. I'm hoping that once you deem the document complete, that you're gonna forget about the outline and just focus on the technical data. But, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead and make those changes for sure.
Could you also, as you start going through the other chapters, it would be great, maybe simultaneously, if you have anything you violently disagree with AKRF's view on what is still missing.
As Dan mentioned, we just received it. I, I did take a quick pass through it. Nothing jumped out at me as being objectionary.
Okay, helpful. Thank you. All right, continue on. Sorry for interrupting.
Not a problem. Uh, so in the first, uh, chapter, whatever it's numbered, is land use and zoning. Uh, we evaluated, uh, the existing zoning in the 2005 Garrison Golf Club, uh, PDD. We evaluated all of the, um, applicable overlay districts, uh, that apply to us. Um, we got into the use and operation of, of Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival and who they are and what they wanna do on the site. Uh, we discussed, um, the proposed zoning and, and the revised PDD and how we would expect that to be changed through amendment through, uh, the town board. Uh, we discussed in, in great, great detail, uh, the consistency of this project with the, both the draft and existing, uh, master plans or comprehensive plans. Um, we provided a, a thorough table, which I think you've seen before in various versions of the EAF that were submitted, that compare, um, the proposed action to the existing condition and also to the 2005, uh, PDD. Um, we also took a look at, at the request of AKRF, all the applicable mitigation members, uh, mitigation measures that were associated with the 2005 PDD that are still applicable today and which we will incorporate into this project. Um, we evaluated the overall site capacity and we described, uh, how all the different lands are, are gonna be conserved and the, um, the proposed, uh, control measures and how we intend to, uh, to conserve, conserve them through conservation easement. Getting into geology and soils, we discussed the onsite soil types, um, and we evaluated the soils that were gonna be disturbed. We identified the soil limitations and their characteristics, including depth of bedrock, uh, depth of water table. We provided a cut and fill analysis and we included a map that, uh, correlated with that cut and fill analysis and showed within the limits of disturbance areas within the site that were gonna be received cut and areas that would receive fill. And we correlated the depth of bedrock in those areas. So, you could see very clearly that we have, within our limits of disturbance, very shallow, or very, um, deep soils, um, and we have very limited cut. And the expectation is that we're not gonna need any sort of blasting or pile driving. That was that, the whole rationale for that map. Uh, in the topography and slope sections, we, we quantified the slopes, um, through a very, various different slope categories, uh, both that are required by your local ordinance and that are requested, uh, through SECRE and the EAF. And we identified, uh, disturbance, proposed disturbances within each of those slope categories. Uh, we also looked at your steep slope regulations and how this project complies with those, or what we will have to do to demonstrate to you that we will need to comply, how we're gonna comply. We did discuss, uh, rock removal and blasting. Again, we feel, um, through onsite soil testing and available, um, soil mapping, that, uh, there's a very, very limited potential for rock removal and blasting. We provided a construction phasing plan and we identified all the erosion and sediment control measures that we anticipate implementing through our SWIP. The vegetation and wildlife section was largely based on a report that was conducted, uh, for the client by Applied Ecological Services, AES. Their report is included as appendix D in the document. They did conduct an onsite evaluation. They walked the entire property. They, um, mapped and described all the different, uh, ecological communities. We mapped that for you. We laid over our limits of disturbance on top of that map so you could see exactly where disturbances are occurring in relationship to those, uh, ecological communities. And I think once you look at that map, you'll see that the areas of disturbance are areas of low, um, or minimal, um, value, biological value. Uh, we also included our correspondence, uh, with the DEC in relationship to, uh, threatened endangered species and species of concern. And at the request of AKRF, we, uh, have coordinated with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service through their IPAC program and, uh, got a list of species that, uh, are known to be in the area or could be in the area. And we evaluated those. Uh, in the AES report, which is included in appendix D, there is a list of, um, plants, birds, mammals, reptiles and amphibians that were, were viewed onsite, uh, by AES during, uh, their site walk. Um, we, we plan to expand on that. Um, and based on the various ecological communities and what they did see onsite, uh, that we're gonna expand that list to, uh, include species that are, are expected to be on the site, uh, based on, on, on the various ecological, uh, communities that are out there and the, and the species that were observed. So, more to come on that. The wetlands and water course sections, my office did the wetland delineation. We did it in October, uh, September and October of 2020. Uh, we delineated seven different, uh, wetland areas. They are mapped, uh, they were surveyed located by, uh, Badie and Watson. They're, they're mapped and shown on all the plans. There's an exhibit to that effect. Uh, we discuss, uh, those seven different wetland areas, uh, and their various jurisdictions, including Army Corps, uh, the town, obviously, um, and in relationship to the water course, uh, and the pond, the DEC. Uh, what's missing from this section is, uh, is the dam analysis that Tectonics preparing. We quantified the wetland and wetland buffer disturbance and we mapped that. The stormwater management section gets into compliance with town and state regulations, um, discussion of the various drainage basins and kinda how water flows throughout the site. We quantify stormwater volumes. Uh, Badie and Watson did perform deep and percolation tests, uh, throughout the site to demonstrate that we have adequate soils to mitigate stormwater. And those results are included in, in appendix. In the utility section, uh, we provided a description and a map of all the onsite and offsite wells associated with the property and also neighboring wells. And we discussed the modifications to this existing, uh, water network. We quantified the existing and, uh, proposed water and sewer demand based on use, based on standards provided by the Health Department and New York State DEC. We discussed, um, the existing and proposed, uh, septic systems, what we're gonna use, what we're gonna- going to abandon, what we're going to install new. The water budget analysis, as I mentioned, is forthcoming, will be prepared by GeoDesign, will be submitted in our next submission to the board. I'm going to briefly touch on traffic, although the expert's here, and if I miss anything, he could, he could nudge me. But we did provide in a traffic report, one of the, probably the threshold issues of the project. It's provided as Appendix F, prepared by John Canning and his group at Kimley Horn. We analyzed, or he analyzed five key intersections, identified the anticipated vehicle trips in the proposed condition at each of those analyzed intersections, provided capacity analysis, looked at the internal driveway network and its capacity, looked at parking onsite and parking demand and needs. And the mitigation that we're proposing, that's included in this document now, is providing left-turn lane on Route Nine into the site at the Route Nine entrance, a new site access, two-way site access drive on Snake Hill Road that has much better site distance than the existing, and a traffic light at Snake Hill Road and Route Nine. Obviously, subject to DOT approval. We also provided, at the request of your consultants, an air quality analysis that was prepared by B. Lang and Associates, that's included in Appendix G. In the visual resource and community character section, we discussed the existing site conditions and the general visibility of the site from the surrounding road network and the surrounding area. We provided an existing condition, existing condition site photographs from various points, points of view from the surrounding road network. We provided, for the proposed condition, renderings, perspective, sightline profiles to demonstrate the visibility of the site from a host of different areas. And those areas were previously approved by the board, those critical points. And we did include a nighttime view, at the request of the board, of what the site would look like at night with our anticipated site lighting. We evaluated views from Storm King Highway, Howell Trail, Route Nine W, Bull Hill Washburn Trail, North Redout, Route Nine, and Snake Hill Road. We provided a discussion of our proposed lighting plan. The noise studies forthcoming, that section right now just includes our scope, the scope of work. Cultural resources, we identified the two eligible properties, Brookmead and South Island United Methodist Church and Parsonage. We provided our correspondence with Chippewa. We owe them some information that we're going to get them, and we expect to get that out shortly, and hope to hear from them soon. And also, we identified that it's not, the site is not located in one of the state's archaeological sensitive areas. Under construction, we identified our phasing plan and evaluated temporary construction-related impacts. Under community services and economy, we discussed the emergency services, we provided a map of our site, a regional map of this, showing the site in relationship to all the emergency service providers. Our team had a meeting with the fire department, we provided some notes about that meeting, they provided us with some feedback, and we demonstrated to you how we responded to all those comments. We provided a discussion and evaluation of the fiscal impacts and economic impacts and taxes. And the last section is largely incomplete, the human health and site assessment, just because that's the Phase One and Two, which is forthcoming. We hope to have that to you soon.
That's very helpful, thank you. Board members' questions, I'd like to ask, try and keep it to the completeness, meaning what is here, as opposed to topics of content, like, I don't agree, or I want a further explanation, but feel free to ask whatever you'd like, anyway. Dennis?
I had a question regarding AKRF's memorandum issued July 14th. As you were reviewing the items for the breakdown, you didn't address any of their notes or requirements or requests. I was just wondering if you had a chance to study that yet? I know you said you just got it yesterday, I believe?
Today.
Today, okay.
The board got it yesterday evening, and so I, once morning broke and Cheryl asked me, can I send it to you? We said yes, so, yes. I don't think we had much more opportunity to redo.
Our only reaction is, our only reaction was that it looked reasonable, we knew certain things were missing, we expected it, there wasn't anything in there that caught us off guard, and we'll work.
It's, it's, it's reasonable. I just wanted that to be acknowledged-
Yes.
-if you had a chance to look at it.
We did receive it, yes.
Thank you.
Got two questions. Others?
I wasn't sure where the changes to the, proposed changes to the Snake Hill roadway are. Which picture that, which of the exhibits that is?
This is the existing Snake Hill Drive, access road is here at the dam. This is the new proposed way.
No, I think she's asking where in the maturity, it's not on the, she knows where Snake Hill is on the map.
No, this is the proposed driveway of Snake Hill. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, but, and so that's, which exhibit is that one, again?
This is the site plan.
Oh, oh, okay.
This is, this is part of the proposed action now, so it's shown on all of our site plans.
Oh, got it, okay.
Just for the record, John Canning, I think it's like in the twenties or early thirties, there's like three exhibits. One of them is for the Route Nine driveway, there's a separator exhibit, and then one is for the Snake Hill Road driveway. But certainly, if you can't find it, we make sure you have it. Thank you.
If it's here, it's here.
Other questions? Anyone? So I'll make one, I'll make one request, and again, I intentionally asked AKRF to give us a report on completeness, as I told you, Dan, ahead of time, because I think that's part of what we need to do, is make sure we have everything. So John, to you, I guess this is directed at you, the only place that they decided to go long, and they're not here to obviously support or explain their work, but they went long with 15 distinctive items related to the traffic study. I know in the, one of our earlier meetings, I raised the, the second, sorry, the first topic about traffic counts and the 2.1 versus 1.7. So I don't want to get into details now, but you have seen these 15 items they've listed.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
And so as long as you address that, that will be helpful to us.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
One, one process question or request. You've got this whole thing, we're going to go through this stuff. When you come back and give us what was not here, can we find a way to either color-code it, or make sure we, because I'm sure all, we're all going to take notes in this big tome here. Can we find a way to-
Skill set, but there's somebody in the team that can do it.
I'm sure there's someone who can make it easier, instead of giving us a whole new set, because that may be hard, although that may, maybe that's what's needed, I don't know.
Would you red-line your changes and-
That may be the easiest thing to do.
Probably.
Okay, other, any other comments, board members?
It's an excellent comment, Neil. Just highlight the new stuff.
I had a process question, if I might.
Yeah, go.
Pardon me, the third Thursday in September is Yom Kippur, I don't know if that affects the date.
Well, I gotta come here or fast. Which one should I do, Dan?
Well, it's a way of atonement for me, and I'm not, I'm of a different religion, but I atone on a regular basis, believe me.
Ah, sure as heck is.
It's the 16th, is it?
Yeah, 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 all right, well, that's a problem for someone. Yeah, I have to come back to you.
Okay. I spotted it tonight, and I thought it would be important to bring up. The second thing, although the public meeting you're talking about, for the secret, to go through everything with a public, is not, I don't think, one of those meetings that requires a notice, but I think it would be a good idea for us to do it, you know, just to put a notice on the, on the property that we're going to have this. And so with that in mind, can we shoot towards whatever the February, or the October meeting is?
I can't, I can't, we don't know.
Okay.
If we, you think we're going to get through all this stuff as a board in one session? You are an incredibly optimistic man.
I've always been that way.
I love that, but I just don't see, I'd be great, when we're done going through as a board, then we're going to have a public hearing, because the public's going to need to consume this stuff, and we're going to let that go as long as it takes to let the public weigh in, and then we can go and do our secret determination. That's the pro, I just, I'm not going to sit here and tell you it's going to take, you know, Glenn's technique is always, I admire Glenn about that, give me a date. I don't think we're ready to give you a date. And I think, I don't know if any of my colleagues would feel comfortable giving you a date at this point.
Never hurts to ask.
No, and I admire that about you. If you advocate for me, I'd like you to do the same, but thank you.
I would, I promise you that.
Thank you, Dan. Other comments or questions?
No, we have the permission to interact with AKRF, which is important-
Please, please do.
And we'll see you at some date to be determined in September.
Well, I, yeah, we'll, talks amongst ourselves-ish, yeah.
If there are any questions that come up in the interim, you know, feel free to reach out to us through AKRF or directly, so that we can keep the process moving, and we don't go into a complete hiatus and lull, because I'm prone to do that when I don't touch a file for a month or two.
Understood. All right, John, sir.
John?
Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
Just one point of clarification on your previous comment. I want to make sure that the comments that were at the end of the list of traffic items, to me, they appear to be more substantive in nature, or most of them, anyway. So I want to make sure that they're not an impediment to completeness. We're going to respond, and we're going to revise the document, but I just look for clarification in that regard, whether they're completeness comments or substantive comments.
That's a good question. They say further explain, provide the backup, should be listed, indicate if paved, like, those sound like completeness ques, like, those sound like, please add this detail, they don't sound like opinion questions to me. I mean-
We can certainly touch-
They're not here to tell us what their, their spirit, their-
And some of the prior calls we had with AKRF, they said, hey, listen, we just got this document two weeks ago, we're going to do the completeness review, but is there any particular aspect that you want to start getting some technical comments on? And we said, traffic. So, yeah, so I don't want to speak for them, but that's what it looked like to me, because we specifically asked to get some technical comments on the traffic as soon as possible.
Yeah, they're on vacation, I wish, yeah. They're withdrawn, exactly. That's funny, that's funny.
That's it?
Yeah, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, good to see everyone in person, it's a, it's a big difference and a, and one, a positive one in my book.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, I love the movie A Blast From The Past, and we are going to have our own Phillips Town version of that tonight. And everyone take out their largest hymnal. Yeah, this thing's going to give way. All right, good point, good point, okay. So hold on one sec, so Kim, you have a que-
So I have a, I have a question for Steve, which is, if you remember, do you remember when we had the Santucci project a long time ago, where it was gone for like five years, and then it came back? And we had a discussion at that time about how long a, whether or not we should have any limits on how long a project would be inactive before it had to, you know?
There's a, there's a regulations, one year before the board can send a letter saying if you don't resume, then the board can adopt a resolution saying it's abandoned. I sent that letter, I believe, in January, and the applicant responded, if you want to continue, please keep it active. And shortly after that, I forget what the next submission was, but there was an additional submission after that. So there's no, no question of that sort of thing in this case.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't think so, but I was just remembering, I just wanted to know what the standard was, so that if we needed to, like, whoever, I assume Cheryl would track that? Is that who we would assign to track that?
I just sent a letter out and say that, that, yeah, well, it could be anyone, but I mean, it happened to be me this occasion, saying it's been a year, there's been no activity, you know, do you plan on going forward? Or, you know, if you don't go forward, the board may adopt a resolution dismissing it as abandoned. That's the procedure.
Okay, good. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
So we have Hudson Highlands Reserve here. Glenn, what I asked you to do when we spoke over this week was, I asked you to give us, because two board members were not involved in any of the previous history, the rest of us were here to include the vote on the secret determination a couple of years ago. So it'd be great if you could, A, give an overview of the project, B, what has changed in the project since the last time we saw it, and then C, similar to what we just did with the previous application, a sense of not opinion about it, but just what is in this material, and what is complete from your perspective.
Very good, and that's, that's exactly what we intended to do. I'm going to give you an overview, tell you about the major changes, then I'm going to ask Steve to go through what is in, in the FEIS. He made me practice, because I kept saying EAF all day when I was talking to him. But at any rate, what we have up here is the original plan. It was a 25-lot cluster subdivision with an equestrian center attached to it, and homes partially surrounding the existing pond. Essentially, the property, as the older members of the board, or the longer-serving members of the board-
There you go.
-I should say. No, the, this is, up here in the northwest portion of the map is Route Nine. This, this is right, this is the PEMCOR building, the building where Studio Nine Hair Design is in, J. Mark Jewellers, it's just a couple of doors up, up north on Route Nine. The plan was for a, a road to be built from Route Nine up into the core of the property, and go, and then go through the, the more developable areas of the property, and end at, at an equestrian center, which would be available to, to residents and members of the public. There's an existing pond, was built in the early 1950s, I believe, still there, that we were protecting to a discussable level, and, and smaller private roads that went off to access the various lots. As you can see, what this, so this project went through a EAF process, got to the point where a negative, a positive declaration was made, and we were required to do a environmental impact statement. There was a scoping session for that, subjects were laid out, and a draft environmental impact statement was submitted, prepared, and a public hearing was held. The reverse of that, the follow-up of that is that during the public comment period, those comments were gathered, sorted into subject matter, and responded to in the final EAF. And during the course of that, those responses, changes have occurred to the plan. And so what you'll find, if you look, compare the two plans, and I just did this very cursory, I marked the most significant changes. I'll start, I guess, with the most. The equestrian center has been dropped from the project. Consequently, the parking, relatively large parking area has been dropped from the project. There was a fair amount of discussion regarding the, the ability of animals, fauna, to, to pass through the property, so we've opened that up more, took away, relocated two of the lots here. We've shortened this road as a result of that. We shortened this road down here in the eastern part of the property. We've short, considerably shortened this road, and moved these, these three lots, and moved, and moved those, moved those lots. So, see, I could have put another X or two in there, and I didn't. But anyway, those things have either been removed, equestrian center, or they have been relocated to another part of the site. So the major changes that have occurred here, first glance, this looks very similar, but you have to, you have to look a little more closely to get that. There was a maintenance building over here, an existing house that was going to be a maintenance building. That building has, the use of that building has been changed, or, you know, one of the lots has been relocated over here. The numbering sequence of the lots has changed, just so they flow better across the map. The, as I pointed out, the old cul-de-sac was right at the property line, it's been shortened. The old cul-de-sac was further up the hill, it's been shortened. This very long cul-de-sac has been- This very long cul-de-sac has been shortened. So we have shortened cul-de-sacs, the equestrian center area is now, some of the lots have been moved, the lots particularly from around the lake have been moved to open up the lakes some more, and the, I guess, and those are the major changes. There's been a lot of regrading and that kind of stuff, which I'm not going to go into because of that detail. So that's the major physical changes that we anticipate. We've responded to the comments. We're hopeful that you will get to the point where you'll be able to discuss this and put to bed. I know that you're under a time, you're under a time constraint, and we're prepared to extend your time to make a finding with this regard to your September meeting, and depending on progress, we'll go from there.
Sure. What is the time constraint? Maybe I'm, is this...
Time constraint is that under the secret regulations, when an FEIS is submitted, the board has to act on it, either accept it or reject it, within 45 days. That timeframe can be, as specifically says in the regulations, extended. Now, most applicants don't like to have you continually reject FEISs until you actually get to the point where, and so it's very common practice for the applicant and the board to agree to extend the timeframe, and since you're not meeting in September, you won't...
August.
Excuse me, August. You won't be in a position to vote to accept or reject it until September, and even then, if there are issues and it has to go back, they may wish to, you know, redo things to get to the point where you can accept it rather than have you vote to reject it.
Is this something we can request tonight of the applicant?
Well, yeah, usually the applicants offer it as opposed to, you know, the board, you know, saying, but either way, whoever asks for it, it's just a good thing to have on the record as a piece of...
Well, Steve, let me ask you this. Can you just step at least one, maybe two steps back? Let's just review, we understand, and Glenn did a great job explaining how we got here, but where do we go from here? So this FEIS is submitted to this board, and again, most of us, I'm sure for Ulysses, this has never been out of your mind, but for the rest of us, volunteers, probably not been top of mind in the last two years, COVID and et cetera. So remind us, with the submission of the FEIS, what then is the board's action at that point and on the path to some form of approval or whatever other resolution?
Well, to take it a step back further, just briefly...
Goes back to you all.
Sure. When the board completed the EAF, it identified some potential significant adverse environmental impacts of the project. There was an escope prepared in which those were delineated, this is what's going to be looked at, and a draft environmental impact statement was prepared in which the applicant actually submitted information and its position as to how it was addressing those potential significant adverse environmental impacts to mitigate them to the maximum extent practicable. Okay? You then accepted that and said, all right, we may not agree with what you've said, but you certainly addressed every one of the potential significant adverse environmental impacts that have been identified. We're now going to hold a public hearing on this, and that's what happened. Public hearing was held and comments were made. An FEIS addresses all the comments that were made at the public hearing, and it has to not only mention them, but it has to address them in a substantive way as well. You don't have to agree with what's said, but if they address them substantively, then, and they have to be, you know, the significant impacts, significant statements, it can't just be any frivolous thing, but I mean, they have to be addressed. And that's what the FEIS is. It's here are all the comments, they group them by category that were made during the public hearing, and here's how we're addressing them. That was already mentioned in the DEIS, or maybe it wasn't mentioned specifically, but here's some more information with which we'll deal with it. You then look at, and your consultants will help you, look at the FEIS and determine if they have actually addressed all the comments made the public hearing, and if they've adequately addressed them. And if they've done those two things, you vote to adopt the FEIS, except, excuse me, the FEIS. Once the FEIS is accepted, I believe it's 30 days that you have in which to adopt a, prepare and adopt a finding statement. That timeframe can be extended too. But you then put that together, and the finding statement is going to say whether they have mitigated, to the maximum extent practicable, all the potential significant adverse environmental impacts that have been identified. If you find that they have, then it's, the finding statement says the project can go forward, and you make whatever requirements as a matter of the land use provisions of the town that you might need to do in order to approve it. If you find that they haven't, you can either say, well, we can approve it if, and you would list conditions, they have to do this and that and the third thing. If you find that they haven't mitigated them to the maximum extent practicable, and you just are unable to come up with conditions which would actually address this, then you would be in a position to deny the application because they haven't complied with their secret obligations.
Other questions for Glenn? I'm sure for Steve on where we are. Go ahead, Dan.
I have a question for Glenn. I might have missed Glenn, but what's the count on the houses, same or is there a change?
Twenty-five.
Okay, so it's the same.
Same.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll just ask Steve to come up and just run you through the contents and...
Yeah. Can I, but you can start it coming up, but I don't believe we've got AKRF lined to review this, as far as I know.
We've not heard back from AKRF. I thought the point was tonight that they were, this was going to be referred to AKRF.
I would happily refer to them because I think we need their...
And they'll get back to you much as on the last application and, you know, hopefully, you know, be in a position to adopt.
As a matter of process, I know with our friends from Shakespeare, we had to ask the town for permission to have their support, but AKRF, I guess, was still already involved in the previous application that stands?
They were hired as the outside consultant on that.
So I think that's still open their involvement, so we need to...
No question about it.
All right, seriously, go ahead, me.
I was going to say, do we need to check with Rich about that or...
Richard Shea?
Yeah.
I don't know. If it's already open, it's open.
They're currently under contract. It really shouldn't be an issue.
Yeah.
Same project.
Yeah. All right, Steve, go ahead, please.
Okay. For those of you who don't know me yet, I'm Steve Gross, the Principal of Hudson Highlands Environmental Consulting. I guess the two new members are the ones with the handwritten named acts and not the fancy ones, so welcome to the board. I'm going to first expand a little bit on what Glenn said for the two new members, just a little bit more background. This doesn't show the entire property. I just quickly put this up here. I know it's tiny, but the property actually extends much farther this way. In total, it's about a 200-acre property. And we have clustered, you know, all those lots, you'd see there are the dark buildings here, we have clustered that on a much more limited part of the property. On this map, the dark green areas were the areas that were identified early on in the process as being constrained areas by steep slopes, wetlands, high-value habitat, and the light green are the areas that were determined to be more developable areas. So you can see that the clustering of the units was placed more in the light green areas, well, exclusively. In addition to that, another constraint was that there were historic resources identified on the property. That included circa 1810 to 1825 barn, and there's an historic road that goes through the entire property, which originally, in the early versions of the plan, that was going to be the spine road for the development, but we decided that it's a beautiful existing natural road, it's one lane with stone walls on the side, and we thought it would be a great feature to preserve that instead of destroying it, but preserve it as kind of a walking trail through the property. So that has been preserved. There's also another existing house that's from the 1920s that has some great architectural features inside. The outside looks a little plain, but inside, the woodwork and everything is just gorgeous. And so that has been preserved too as being one of the houses, will be one of the residences out of the 25. So historically, also the center where that historic road was, is where there were previous improvements, and so that was another reason for trying to cluster it in the middle. In doing this, we have preserved a very large area of the property that is now, with changes that we've made, all interconnected. You can go from this part through this part, all the way, and then around over to this part without ever crossing a roadway. So one of the concerns that we had in comments was having that interconnectivity for wildlife, and so we have made sure that that does exist. Something else that I can point out is that we have a water course that comes down this way into the pond and then flows out of the pond offsite and then flows into the Clove Creek, which flows just offsite and then onto the site over here. This plan has avoided all stream crossings, wetland crossings, and wetland buffer. None of those are disturbed in any way under this plan. In fact, we've increased the size of buffers like around the pond, the 100-foot setback from the pond, that's regulatory, which I believe is this line here. We added more to that, and I believe it's 140?
Forty.
140 feet for the lot line. The actual development is even further, but the lot lines are set at 140 feet away from the pond. So that gives you a little bit more background about the lengths that we went through. Actually, this will illustrate things greatly. This entrance road was originally proposed over here, and when it was found that we were going to be within 100 feet of this wetland over here, the project sponsor, Yuli, I've never had a client do this before, bought the neighboring property, which was a commercial lot, for the sole purpose of moving the road further over to get it outside the 100 feet. I've never, I've never known anyone to do that, but that's what he did. So we have gone through great lengths to make sure that we stayed off the steep slopes, we stayed off the, we avoided the stream crossings, the wetlands, the wetland buffer, everything. The one place that steep slopes are being impacted is actually with this entrance road. And that was from the desire that we were instructed to have the entrance come off of Route 9. In the FEIS, I will point out that we do have an alternative that was a brand-new alternative that did not exist in the DEIS, and that is, for your consideration, but we have an alternative that would eliminate this entrance road and have the entrance instead come off of East Mountain Road North in what actually was a section of the historic road, but is also an existing driveway for this existing house that's here. So that alternative has the road coming in over here and completely eliminating this entrance road and all the impacts from the steep slopes, developing of the steep slopes that would occur there. So I'll just point that out because it's a brand-new alternative that did not exist before. The FEIS has been arranged pretty much in accordance with the structure of the DEIS, so there, and all the comments were grouped by topic according to the, like the project description is in the beginning, and then we go into the different areas of impacts, like water resources and zoning and land use, et cetera, and then we go into alternatives. So it follows the order of the DEIS. One of the other things that I will note is that, and you will see that we have all of the comment letters and all of the public hearing comments in the appendix. These have been, the comments were repeated verbatim in the body of the FEIS then with the response. Where there was multiple comments on the same point, we chose the one that we thought best stated that point as the one to represent it, and that's what's included in the FEIS, but it represents other comments that people said that were identical. I do a lot of reviews of FEISs for clients that are opposing projects, and one of the things that is my common comment is that in the way that comments were chosen, that they missed points or comments that were done, that were said by people. So I was sensitive to that, and so I will also point out that since I was the one that was choosing the comments and laying them out, that where there was a different nuance in a comment, even though it seemed almost identical, if there was a different nuance, I included it. I also made sure that in a long comment where several points were made, that I separated out those points into separate comments. So you will see that as well. So I was trying to be very, very particular in making sure that nothing got missed. And then, once I developed those comments, you know, the layout that was submitted to AKRF, they reviewed it and approved it, and then we moved on from there to do all the responses.
So when was that?
When was that?
When was AKRF? When did they give you their response?
I mean, when they approved?
What you just said, you said, made a statement, I asked you for a date on that.
They, I believe that was already back in 2019, wasn't it? I can't, I'm trying to remember. Do you remember, Glenn?
Well, that's what, I'm just trying, because again, for us, like, that's a long, long time ago.
A long time ago.
And so I know that Chris Robin still works there, but you have not been in contact with them since that date?
No, that's not true.
That was a question.
Yeah, we did some coordination. I can't tell you dates anymore, you know, it's been a lot of time.
Like pre-COVID?
Hmm?
Like pre-COVID, you're saying?
There was, yeah, mostly, I'm trying to think if there's anything since COVID.
I say, I ask that only because, and I appreciate all the hard work, I'm sure we all do as a board, but we're going to have to get some slight regrounding from them to even get reoriented what the project is, for them to help us assess what is here, because it's just going to take us some time to get reacquainted. It's not like this was...
We've given you a lot of material.
There's a lot, there's a lot of paper in here, and even with the hiatus we're going to take, and right after we're done, I'm going to check with AKRF tomorrow to see who is going to work on this to assess it, but it's just going to take a little time.
We've given you a lot of material, a lot of people worked on this.
I'm sure.
So there are responses, you know, that were developed by a whole team of people. I served to coordinate it and make sure it all flowed, but this is a very long involved effort.
Well, therefore deserves thoughtful, a thoughtful review then, we're going to give you that.
I think that's all we have, and you guys remember? Oh, okay, this is Drew.
Hi, everyone. My name is Drew Gammels. I'm from Keene and Bean. I just wanted to point out that one of the other issues that came up a lot in the comments was about the conservation easement, and the area to be preserved will be protected via conservation easement. Our office is working on multiple leads to try and someone who might be interested in taking on that conservation easement. So we don't have a name at this time, but we have reached out to various organizations and are pursuing these, those groups, so we'll get something on that.
Sadly, I vaguely remember that topic, and since the head of the Hudson Land Trust since then has left, I'm not, I don't know if you've...
Michelle's left, she's right there.
Was Michelle Smith here?
Michelle's not the head.
No, the previous head of the Hudson left, she says. She was quite vocal in many of her documents and memos on the topic, so I don't, hopefully you've met then, our new head.
And the town remains in option to take that conservation easement, but we're just looking into other possibilities as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
Well, I think the last thing that I'd like to say is it reminds me of the end of school every year when I feared the summer reading program.
Well, you've got your hands in both of these, don't you? All right. Thank you very much. Any comments on the board? Okay, well, look, thank you, enjoy your well-earned break for the August recess. It's been a couple of years since we've had one, and please enjoy it. We have a lot of reading to do. I'll be in touch about what we'll do, if anything differently, for our September meeting or meetings, and what's that?
Thursday.
It's the 3rd of Thursday of September.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, it's, I know, we're not, we're going to solve that right this... Oh, it's, I know, we're not, we're going to solve that right this second. All right, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Dennis, second. All right, thank you. Good night.[1783.24]